Called to order the Board of County Commissioners's Regular Meeting of April 23, 2015. Welcome, everybody. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the state of Arizona, the federal government of the United States.
Are there any changes that need to come on the agenda today? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second?
All those in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. An individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the County Manager's Office. Today, we do also have a public hearing on increasing the size of the Board of the Grant County Commissioners. If you'd like to speak on that subject, wait until the public hearing, and you'll be allowed to speak at that time. So at this time, I'll ask for public input.
Yes, sir.
Name's Baldwin, District 3.
Turn the mics on, Mr. Baldwin. The red white button. Perfect. Did you turn red?
No, I didn't. Yes, it did. As a Democrat, I don't want to touch that. I'm in District 3, and I have two concerns. One is this building. On the outside of this building, there are arches, and two of those arches have very serious cracks in them where the plaster is spreading apart, as much so that I could, without forcing, without breaking, I could put the end of this, my glasses, temple into that fracture. I think that needs to be remedied before it becomes worse. However, in keeping with the age of this building, and this building was originally a five-and-dime TGNY store, which moved from downtown out here, as I remember, this is an old building, and we have railings out there, which are very nice railings, but they look as ancient as this building. The railings are starting to rust, and the rust is going down onto the concrete and starting to discolor the concrete immediately around the base of the railings. At one time, they were sprayed black, and there was a commotion of "rrooh-ah-ha" over that, and I would very much like to see the railings at least, at least, look halfway new, in contrast to the rest of the building out there, which is fractured and the stucco is starting to peel off. My second concern, well, to be concise on the first one, I'd like to see the railings painted black so they look nice and shiny and new, and are easier to slide your one's hands up and down. My second concern is for a recycle bin at the intersection of Bear Mountain Road and Archer Road. The county has an area in there where it parks its road graders and gravel for surfacing the road, and I would like to see a recycle bin placed there for the simple reason that there are about 1,000 people in the area of the Silver Creek Mobile Park, Michael's Mobile Manor, and right on out the road to Ellis Mesa, and we could put our refuge. God, that's bad word to use, but that's what's going to happen. But I would like to see a recycle bin put there, and if there is refuge put in there, it would be because the public has not been notified, informed, or the public is sloppy. But you can't hold the rest of us responsible for the actions of only a few, so please consider that. Thank you.
Other public input.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the Board. I'm here as the former county assessor. Since January of this year, I've had multiple phone calls and visitors in my office asking about the assessor's office, and that claims are being made that I left the assessor's office amiss and that I didn't know what I was doing. I'm here to address those false claims. When I left the assessor's office in 2013, the valuations were set, the notice of values were sent out on time, the certified values were sent to the state, the tax rates were sent back to me from the state, the county's tax rates were checked and rechecked using the yield control formula and the inflation growth index. All other entities' tax rates were also verified, and all taxes, and all tax rates were approved by the county commission. Once approved, they were implemented into the computer and sent to the treasurer's office for collection. The deeds were done in a timeframe allocated by the state statute, which is 45 days. I believe we were within 30 days, and that's credit to the county map at that time by the Vegas. So any issues comparing the assessor's office today have absolutely nothing to do with me. I had a well-educated and competent staff that worked hard every day, and any misinformation about the status of the assessor's office when I left is a discredit to them and the hard work that they did. I had six New Mexico certified appraisers, including myself, and several others working towards that certification. The state of New Mexico, property tax division did an annual evaluation on the office, and these evaluations will support what I just said. Those evaluations are sent to the county manager, and as far as I know, are of public record. When you come to work every day and put in the time the job requires, it can be rewarding. When you choose not to come to work and put all the responsibility on someone else and others, you get caught holding the bag. Not only will you not be able to open that bag, but you won't know how to use the tools that are in it. The public has elected a new administration in the assessor's office. I want to congratulate them and wish them and their staff the best of luck as they move forward. I've turned a new chapter in my tenure with Grant County. I've taken the same professionalism and integrity to that department. I want to thank you for allowing me the time to address these false issues. I give in 25 years to the assessor's office, 15 of those as an elected official or a deputy. I shouldn't have to be up here defending myself. For me, it was all about, it wasn't about the title, it was about the hard work that I put in, and it was about the work that I was elected to do. So I want to thank you for allowing me to address these issues, and this is the last time that I will speak on this issue, and I encourage others to do the same. Thank you.
Other public input. Seeing none, we'll move on. Move to the public hearing. This is the discussion of proposed ordinance to increase the size of the Board of Grant County Commissioners to five members pursuant to Article X, Section 7 of the New Mexico Constitution, to be considered at the July 23, 2015 Commissioners' Meeting. I would like to start today with Research and Polling to give us a little presentation.
Good morning, everyone. The light is on this time for me. Last time it wasn't on as they were talking. Anyway, my name is Michael Sharp, and I'm Vice President at Research and Polling, and I've been contracted by the county to look at changing the number of county commission districts from three districts to five, and specifically to give the county commission some ideas of what five districts could look like when you go from three districts to five. So I have a presentation I'd like to do. I know there's some folks in the audience who might want to comment, so what I'd like to do is give a brief introduction to the redistricting process, the principles that we have to follow when redistricting, and then go through the plans, and then I can answer any questions afterwards. So a little bit about us, we've been doing this for a while, over 25 years, completed over 150 projects or so, state, local levels, cities, school boards, county commissions, legislature, and so on, and have done some work within the Grant County Silver City areas. Redistricting, what is redistricting? It's basically the process of redrawing boundary lines of elected districts such that when you're finished, the districts are equal in population. In essence, that's, in a nutshell, what redistricting is. By statute, or by state statute, you must redistrict, counties must redistrict if they have a population greater than 13,000. Grant County easily crosses that threshold with over 29,000 people. You're going from three to five, and so what we want to do is, you're looking at doing this now, we have to use, when we redistrict, we have to use the latest census data, 2010 census. We'd love to be able to use data from, say, the 2014 population, or 2013, or even 2015, but unfortunately, that data is not available. The best data that we have at the levels that we need for redistricting is from the 2010 census. That data's at the precinct level. So that's a common question that comes up. You may have experienced some growth within Grant County between 2010 and 2015, but we really can't incorporate that information into our plans. So the next time you redistrict, based on new census data, would be after the 2020 census. Who gets to redistrict, and who is responsible for the redistricting plans? At the state legislative level, the legislature is responsible for the House, the Senate, the congressional districts, the PRC, the Public Education Commission. Down to the county level, this is a decision for the county commissioners. The legislature can't really tell you what your districts will look like. The city councils or commissions, whatever you happen to have, within whatever county you're in, they don't really have any influence over what the county commission districts look like. It's up to the county commission to decide. Some key dates. The commission is looking at going from three districts to five. Once that decision is made, then if that decision's made prior to the 2016 election cycle, the objective here is to have a redistricting plan in place for five districts, far enough ahead of time such that the county clerk can reassign voters to the proper district and also get ready for that primary election cycle. So we want to get this finished with a lot of lead time to make sure that everybody's in the proper districts. Basic redistricting process. I was here last month and gave a quick, well, not so quick, but an introduction to the ABC's redistricting, talked about the process, kind of what I'm doing now. This is the second meeting at which plans are available to be seen. We can take input from both the commissioners and public as to their thoughts on the plans, likes, dislikes, and so on. If there are any suggestions to the plans, we can take a look and see if those modifications are possible, and then come back to and say, geez, that worked, or geez, this didn't work. And then we can come back to the next meeting and present a new plan. That process continues on until eventually the commission adopts a plan. Basic principles of redistricting. So these are the guidelines of redistricting. I like to say, if you have, if you're building a table, you have four table legs, those are the first four principles: equal population, minority voting rights, compactness, and contiguity. Once you have a nice, stable base, then you can use your communities of interest to determine what your tabletop will look like. So let's go over those. So who's counted with respect to equal population? The census counted everybody. It's adults, kids, citizens, non-citizens. So in essence, everyone. No matter who you are, no matter where you come from, no matter your legal status or citizen or non-citizen, you are part of the census count. It's not limited to registered voters. In terms of the population and constitutional mandate to redistrict, with respect to equal population, when we districted the congressional districts within New Mexico, we had to get every district perfectly equal in population. It's relatively easy to do, is that we have 1,500 precincts to work with, and it's straightforward to get districts who are very, very close in population. The courts have said, well, with smaller entities like county commissions, well, you have fewer building blocks, and when you move a building block from one district to another, it can dramatically change a district's population. So when you're looking at equal population, the districts for county commissions can be what they call substantially equal in population. So you take your ideal population, which I'll describe in the next slide, and go above that or below that by about 5 percent. So we call it 10 percent total deviation. So that's what we're allowed for the county commissions. So what is that ideal population for Grant County? It's the county's population, 29,500 divided by 5, which gets you about 5,900 people. That's our target, if you will. But because we can get districts which are substantially equal, we can go above or below that by about 5 percent. So that's above or below 5,900 by almost 300 people. So in the end, our districts will range, or your districts will range, between about 5,600 and 6,200 people. As long as the districts are within that range, then they are considered substantially equal in the eyes of the law and the courts. And again, it's based on population and not registered voters. Next one is minority voting strength. We want to give the minority population an opportunity to elect the candidate of their choice. Within Grant County, that minority population is the Hispanic community, the Black community or Asian community. Those populations are not big enough to create districts which are majority Black or majority Native American or majority Asian. And so when we're looking at minority population, we look at the populations where you're able to create districts, where they have the opportunity to elect a candidate of their choice. When we create these districts based on ethnicity or race or Hispanic, we can't use that as the sole criterion creating the districts while ignoring the other principles of redistricting. The districts still have to be compact. They still should take into account communities of interest and compactus contributie and so on. So race or ethnicity cannot be the sole criteria in creating a district. Compactus is the third leg of a table. It just basically means it should look pretty good on paper. The outlines shouldn't have little, shouldn't have little fingers sticking out all over the place, and it should look good. There's a bunch of different scientific measures or mathematical measures, but they all kind of, they don't really mean too much in terms of their standing within the courts. It's just, if it looks good, then it probably is. And also, one thing to keep in mind, to see a lot of districts on the plans, for example, District 4, Plan A, which is really, really large, and District 3, which is fairly small in the middle of Silver City, that, those are still compact districts. Just because they're very large in geographic area doesn't mean they're compact. And compact, if you will, if you took, if you just took away all your landmarks and streams and streets and just looked at the outer boundary of a district without any other sort of reference to size, it's really the shape of the outer boundary that matters and not necessarily the size of the district itself. So quick examples of compactness. That one on the left is New Mexico. That's compact. Two figures on the right, you'll notice there's a green district in the middle. That one is not compact. There's actually a purple one that goes all the way around it and intertwines like a whole bunch of octopus tentacles, and that, those were determined not compact, and they were thrown out by the courts. The one on the bottom is North Carolina. That was also thrown out by the courts as being not compact. Those, all those districts were drawn based solely on race, and so they are thrown out. Contiguity. Every district has to be made up of one piece, not two or more. It's pretty straightforward. You have to be able to put your pencil on a district, get to every other part of the district without lifting up a pencil. Figure on the left, everything is contiguous. Figure on the right, you notice that District A is broken up into two pieces. That's not contiguous. Okay, those are the four legs of the table, those who are legal constitutional requirements. From there, you have your communities of interest. It includes everything else that you could possibly think of. It can include maintaining your current district boundaries of the core of your districts. It's a little more difficult when you go from three to five. You can look at where your current commissioners live. It's perfectly acceptable, as long as the other principles are taken care of. You can look at neighborhood boundaries. You can look at using major geographic features like streets or streams or rivers as boundaries between districts. And you can also look at communities. You can say, well, geez, I know one of the plans, it splits a community into two districts, and you might not want to split that community. So that is part of a community of interest. And so it's everything else you could possibly think of. One other community of interest that comes into play are precinct boundaries. With respect to building districts, we try to use precincts as our basic building block. And when we build, all these plans are based on districts that do not split precincts. Splitting precincts can cause a headache for the county clerk when trying to determine and assign voters from one, put them from one district into another, or even when you go to vote. We don't, we want to avoid something where somebody in precinct one or half of them go vote in one precinct to have, for one district and half vote in another district that causes confusion. So all these plans keep precincts intact. All right, so those are our guidelines of redistricting, and when we have these plans, you'll also notice, because we have all these guidelines, it's basically difficult to create what we would call a perfect plan. We have to meet all these criteria, and almost every single time, there's something that isn't ideal about a plan, something that you don't necessarily like. And so really, every plan is imperfect, or the other way to say it is every plan is not perfect. And any changes, you might say, geez, can you make a change to, you know, District 1 or District 4? Is it possible to do that? And I might say, yeah, it's possible, but it impacts other districts as well. So other suggestions you have for one district can cause a domino effect throughout the rest of the districts as well, and that's something to keep in mind. So these are intended to initiate discussion, and they may or may not be a plan that is selected by the county commission, but they're here to start, start the dialogue. Okay. So here are your current districts. District 1 is Silver City, Arminis Valley, Santa Clara. It's pretty compact in the middle of the county district. District 2 is Bayard, Hanover, Hurley, Silver Acres, White Signal, down to Hatita. And District 3 is a rural district from Yule Creek down into Silver City. It's hard for me to see that. Okay, that's Silver City.
You may have a better guess.
Okay, for Silver City, just for current districts, you'll notice that little map on the left, it's basically divided into, and what divided into between Bayard along Cooper, 180, Swan, and East 32nd, then over to Pino Salto. Oh, yeah. And so I try to, well, it's hard to reference both, but basically, Silver City's split in two. It's fairly easy to do that with three districts. When you go to the other plan, Silver City's going to be split between more than two districts. Within the, I want to say, the central, the area between Silver City and, say, Hanover, you'll notice that Santa Clara's in District 1, Bayard and Hurley are both in District 2, and the boundary, the district bounded between those two is the Rio Darius and Cameron Creek. Between Districts 1 and 2 on District 1's east side. So that district doesn't change very much throughout all the plans. In terms of the population, your ideal population for three districts is actually 9,800. That's your total population in the county divided by 3. The Hispanic population for the county is about 43 percent adult Hispanic. When we look at percent minority with respect to voting rights, we have to look at the adult population and not necessarily the total population. Total Hispanic population within Grant County is 48 percent, but when you look at voting rights, you look at an adult population, that's 43 percent for a percent Hispanic. Okay, Plan A. We have two new districts, District 4 and 5, but because you're going from three to five, there can be a lot of changes. Districts 1, 2, and 3 may not look like what you have today. District 1 is very, though, District 1 is very similar to what you have today. It does lose some precincts in the Silver City area, but still Santa Clara, Arminis Valley, and somewhat Silver City District. District 2 is pretty close to what you have today, except it loses the Gila Hot Springs, and it also loses Pino Salto's Red Rock, White Signal, and it loses Tyrone in terms of District 2. So District 2 shrank. All these districts were too big when you had three, so they all, the original ones all have to shrink. District 3 is now basically a Silver City district, and it loses all the rural areas that it used to have to this north and west. You'll notice in the current plan, District 3 just scoots all the way to the northwestern corner of the county. Now it's just basically a Silver City district. District 4 kind of picks up what District 3 and District 2 lost. So it's a northern, western, southern district that wraps around Silver City for the most part, and it does come into Silver City through Pino Salto's down to about 32nd Street. And I do have another map that goes into Silver City area. So you'll see that District 4 does come down into Pino Salto's, all the way down into Silver City down to 32nd, between Little Walnut and Swan, excuse me, and Pino Salto's. Down to 32nd is District 4. Within Silver City, you'll notice that District 1 lost all the population south of Broadway and College. It used to go south of that. District 3 now extends further into Silver City, over to Pino Salto's, between Highway 180 and 32nd. It did lose an area south of 8th. That's Precinct 20, lost that to District 5. District 4, we talked about, coming down to 32nd. District 5 is now everything south of 8th, College, and Broadway. Within Silver City, District 5 also includes Tyrone and Silver Acres. With respect to the Santa Clara, Bayard, Hurley area, that doesn't change. So you still have Santa Clara within District 1, and Bayard and Hurley in District 2. Okay. Whoops. Previous. For Plan B, this was a different look in Silver City compared to A. I just wanted to try something a little bit different. District 3, you'll notice in Plan B, is now more of a rural district. So it takes back some of what it lost in the northwestern part of the county. So it's northern, western, southern district. In the previous plan, District 4 had all of that area, and now it's District 3. It still comes into Silver City a little bit, but before Plan A, it was simply a Silver City district. District 4 is basically the same as District 5 in the other. In the previous plan, you'll notice in Plan A and Plan B, in Plan A, there's that District 5 in the middle, in Plan B, it's now District 4. That's just to give you an idea that, with respect to the district numbering, that you can flip off those numbers if you so chose. So in Plan A, if you wanted District, that middle district, that blue district, to be 4 instead of 5, then we could swap the numbers for 4 and 5. So really, we only changed two districts. District 5 ends up being a kind of a northern Silver City district. It includes Cleveland Line Road, and basically, both sides are Swan from 32nd North. District 1 stays the same. District 4 within Silver City does, is the same as District 5 before, comes up to Broadway and College within Silver City. You notice that District 3 comes down Walnut, Little Walnut, within Silver City, down to about 8th Street. So it has, it comes to a nice corner at about 8th, and I have my notes here, 8th and Cooper. District 1 stays the same. District 5 comes down to 180. Within the Santa Clara, Bayard, Hurley area, same as Plan A. Okay, Plan C. This was something just a little bit different. I just, once again, it's good to give different aspects, different views of what's possible with respect to the county commission districts. So District 3 is similar to what you had in Plan B. Again, it's a northern, southern, western county district, but it comes into Silver City down from the south instead of from the north, and it comes in, again, from the south, includes Tyrone. District 2, in the previous two plans, it did not have Gila Hot Springs. In this particular plan, it does. But because it gained those two precincts, it had to lose precincts, and I'll get to that in just a moment. So that's one of the major changes for District 2, is Gila's Hot Springs is still, is back in District 2 like you have today. Okay, so for Central Grant County, you'll notice that when District 2, I said it included, now included Gila Hot Springs, it became too big, and so it had to lose population once it became too big. And that population, in this case, is one precinct, and that's the one that basically it splits. It splits Bayard and it's Precinct 25. So District 2 gained Gila Hot Springs, it's too big, it had to lose population, and it lost it by removing one precinct, giving it to District 1, but in doing so, it ended up splitting, split Bayard. And there might be another way to include Gila Hot Springs in District 2 and move some other precincts, but I can take a look at that later if that's, if that's a suggestion. So District 1 basically moves out of the heart of Silver City. District 2, as I just described. District 5 is Pino Salto's, comes into Silver City a little bit, north of 180. District Five is Pinos Altos, comes into Silver City a little bit, north of 180. District Four is quite different. It is a little bit different for District Four. It's kind of a long district going through the heart of Silver City, north to south, and the whole part in the southern part is just, there's not too much population to the east of Silver Acres, but it's just a function of that precinct being a funny shape. Within Silver City itself, District One comes into Silver City to about Silver Creek, south of Broadway. District Three goes into Silver City from the south up to about 180 along Cooper, Santa Rita Street. District Five is basically eastern, its eastern edge is Swan, Rocky Creek Road. District Four in the northern part is between Swan and Rocky Creek, and then Pinos Altos down to Broadway between Cooper slash Santa Rita, Mountain View, south to Fairway Drive. So that's within Silver City. And then, as I mentioned before, in this particular plan, we had to split Bayard between Districts One and Two, where Precinct 25 is now District One instead of District Two in this particular plan. That was due to that Gila hot springs, those two precincts, Three and Four. So those are the plans that I have, and so I'm open to any questions or comments. Thank you. Does anyone have any comments at this time? Okay. Thank you very much for that report. I think what we'll do is we will go to the public comments at this time, and maybe that'll raise some questions. Thank you. So at this time, we'll stand for public comments. If you might from the public like to talk about, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Commissioners and staff, I really want to thank you for having these public hearings. And I want to acknowledge and really say how much I appreciate your consideration of going to a five-nimber commission, because all of the research that I know our group dynamics know that it is better ideation. I'm sorry, I did not introduce myself.
I was going to say, I was going to.
I know most everyone.
We know, we know.
Someone help me. Yes, I'm Linda Eamon Smith, speaking as a citizen of Grant County. I'm not thinking, nor do you have a council.
I'm one of your constituents.
You are my commissioner, so this is a great double thing here. I'm particularly interested in the, I very much appreciated the explanation by this gentleman here of the criteria for redistricting. And the thing about having the districts look good on paper is really interesting to me, because if you have these long, snaky things, it really does look like something squirrely is going on. But one of the things that I want to really speak to is that I understand very much the need for population, for minority, for continuity, but I really want to speak about the idea of community of interest. And I do not know specifically what the criteria were for community of interest other than maintaining districts, but we do have some really unique cultural areas in our communities. We have the historic mining areas, we have the historical downtown. And I guess as well as acknowledging all of the work that you're doing and saying how much I appreciate you considering going to a five-nimber commission, I think I would like to see a little more explanation and discussion of those cultural components of the historical and cultural areas that we have, and how that community of interest component be explained and perhaps weighted a little bit more highly. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else that would like to speak in this public hearing? Well, come on up.
You hear often enough that you know the drill, so.
Yes. Even though I'm a Democrat. I am in District Three, and I have a question, and I want the answer to be not a one-word answer. My question is a one-word question. Why? Because is the common answer for a one-word question, why? Why do we need five?
I don't think we're saying we do. We're saying that we want to have hearings and hear what the public has to say.
Okay.
That's not one word.
All right, fine. Thank you.
Be best. Any further comment in this public hearing? Okay, then we're going to move on. Do you have anything to close, or?
No, not really, but thank you very much for having me down here and look forward to speaking in front of you again next week.
Well, we're going to actually hold four hearings, gives the public plenty of access. I know that all the media outlets are writing about it every chance they, every time we say something about it, I see it in the newspaper or online. So hopefully we'll get a lot of really good comments and we'll move forward with this in a prudent fashion. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is minutes. Approve or disapprove, March 26, 2015, regular meeting minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion we approve the March 26, 2015, regular meeting minutes.
Second? Motion to second to approve the March 26, 2015, meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify or say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports. Approve or disapprove the April 20, 2015 expenditure reports? Before we take a motion, Linda, you want to go through those, through that for us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This expenditure report approval is for a total of $1,550,856.24. The total AP checks in this report is $1,137,967.77. Included in these AP checks is a check to Ascent Aviation in the amount of $19,042.68. And this is for the March jet fuel. There is a check to Engineers Incorporated for engineering services for the North Hurley Road project in the amount of $9,822.6. A check to Summit Food Services in the amount of $18,044. And this is for the February inmate meals. A check to Architecture Workshop in the amount of $21,274.9. And this is for architectural services for the remodel of the Grant County Memorial Veterans Business and Conference Center. There is a check to Bank of America in the amount of $14,364.72. And this is for a lease payment on a pumper at Tyrone Fire Department. And there is a check to Wright Express Fleet Services in the amount of $25,231.22. And this is for the March field. Also included in this expenditure report are payroll checks for Pay Period Seven and Pay Period Eight, for a total of $412,888.47.
Any questions on the expenditure report?
No, sir.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the April 20, 2015 expenditure report.
I said, motion to second to approve the April 20, 2015 expenditure report. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify or say no.
Aye.
Motion passes. Can you go through the cash flow report real quick for us, Linda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three-part, this for the general fund, and this is for the month ending of January 31, 2015. The actual cash balance at July 1, 2014, was $2,379,621. The revenues through January 31st were $5,762,242. Transfers to date were $1,268,910. The negative that's transferred out. The operating expenditures to date were $1,980,700. And salaries and benefits to date, $3,424,283. Leaving us with an actual cash balance at January 31 of $1,467,971. The projected amounts through the end of June 30, 2015 are transfers in of $432,960, transfers out of $1,370,301. Projected operating expenditures of $814,182. Projected salaries and benefits of $2,880,015. Leaving us with a projected cash balance at the end of June 30 of $2,413,335, with a projected surplus of $51,682. In the road fund, the actual cash balance at July 1, 2014, was $120,460, and revenues to date of $374,253. Transfers to date of $333,216, with operating expenditures through date of $148,593. Salaries and benefits here to date of $739,719. Leaving us with an actual cash balance at the end of January 31 of $60,000, negative $60,384. And that negative is due to the second half of transfers that need to go in once we collect taxes the second half in May. The projected, the projections through June 30, 2015 are projected transfers in of $506,230, projected revenues of $501,467, projected operating expenditures of $205,417, projected salaries and benefits of $558,480. Leaving us with a projected cash balance at the end of June 30 of $183,425, with a projected surplus of $45,741. In the correction fund, the actual cash balance of July 1, 2014, was $26,163, revenues to date of $549,921, transfers to date of $835,132, and operating expenditures here to date of $343,122, and salaries and benefits here to date of $1,145,294. With an actual cash balance at the end of January 31, 2015, of a negative $77,200. And again, this is due to the second half of the cash transfers from the general fund. Projections through June 30, 2015 are transfers in of $835,132, projected revenues of $417,002, projected operating expenditures of $305,738, projected salaries and benefits of $861,773, with a projected cash balance at the end of June 30, 2015, of $7,422.
Thank you very much, Linda. Moving on to Item D, legislative report from Senator Hagerell. Good morning, Senator, how are you today?
Good morning, Senator. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission, elected officials, county manager web, and staff. Thank you for once again having me here. Always enjoy coming in and giving an update and to have discussions, and more so, to answer any questions that you may have in regards to this legislative session. This legislative session was a different one, one that we hadn't experienced in the last six to two years, because it was a divided legislature, meaning that the House was controlled by a Republican majority and the Senate controlled by a Democratic majority. And despite what you might have seen on the TVs and media reports, as far as there being no cooperation, no communication, we really didn't see that in the Senate. I have to say that we had good bipartisan support within the Republican members as well as the Democratic members, and I think that's the way it should be. Obviously, there was things that we didn't agree upon, there was things that we had to work through and compromise, but that's part of the process. And I want to say thank you for each of you that made the time to get up there to advocate for your projects or advocate for funding that was important to you, because that helps to direct me in which direction that I needed to voice my concerns and my strong opinion for our community. So with that, I was very appreciative of, to begin the session with our Grant County Day. I have to say that Grant County Day has become one of the most, if not the most attended events there at the legislature. We have people from all parts of the state that come in and take part of the festivities. But during the day, what really takes place is so instrumental to all of our communities, because we advocate whether it's funding for our county projects, to funding to our municipalities, to our road projects, to our association of waters, groups that are together. All these things come in and they give this opportunity for our cabinet secretaries and our staff to hear what we need to work in our community. So it's a wonderful celebration, and I encourage you guys once again to join us at Grant County Day during the 2016 legislative session. During this session, what we saw is it was kind of a roller coaster, beginning with, we thought that the reserves or the operational dollars that we would have to work with, new money, so to speak, was going to be about $288 million. Because of the drop of oil prices, and we saw that at the gas pump, you see that the prices have gone down, but what happens is actually less revenue for the state, so it's kind of a double-edged sword, which is good for us as in the public, that we pay less at the pump, but it also is not as good for state revenue, because we are so dependent on those type of revenues. So it dropped to 288 million in August to about 140 million coming December. By the time we hit the last session in January, we were down to about 83 million new dollars. So what this meant is that the dollars that we had expected to assist programs or assist other areas of the state was just not going to be there, but it still wasn't as bad as it had been in 2008. If you remember, when we hit the recession going into the 2009 legislative session, we had a deficit, or I shouldn't say deficit, it was a shortfall, because we had to have a balanced budget. We had a shortfall, so we had to make immediate cuts for that fiscal year, which affected all of us, and we had to make cuts for the next fiscal year. That didn't take place this year. We obviously didn't have enough dollars to work with as we thought we were going to have, but we still were able to put in some dollars in some much-needed areas. When you look and see how we fared in Grant County, I'm very proud of the work that we were able to do. And I want to thank publicly Senator John Artis Smith, who's my counterpart, in the Senate, and we both sit on Senate Finance Committee, and the work that we do for our communities, not just in Grant County, in Duane County, but all of Southwest New Mexico. And that really showed, because a lot of the work that we do on the budget side really benefited our communities. And as you're aware, we'll have $2.1 million, we believe, coming into our regional water system, and I think that that's going to be important, because as we try to connect our water system, that benefits every one of our residents. With the work of the ISC, we see that that has been approved. I'll continue to advocate that there'll be more dollars put in for that project, because when you have $15 million price tag on that, you know, it's really difficult to get much done with the $2.1. We will leverage more funds there. We also were able to bring in much-needed dollars for areas that are important to me. And when I advocate up there, I always remember four areas. How are we representing our senior citizens? How are we representing our veterans? How are we advocating for our educational system from pre-K all the way to our universities? And how we're taking care of people with disabilities? So I look at areas like that, and fortunately, we were able to put in about $800,000 into services such as LiveQuest that they provide for people with disabilities. So that was a real win as well for our communities. We were also able to get in some money for our university, where there was a capital outlay request that was asked to give $500,000 for security cameras to the university, that was going to be extremely difficult to do with the small dollar amounts that we have with capital outlay. And I'll get into more on capital outlay in just a bit, but with that, what we were able to do with the work of Senator Smith, and we represent the university, we were able to put that into the operational budget, where we put that in a one-time capital outlay expenditure, meaning that we put $500,000 in for those cameras. That has been signed into law, now what they'll have to do is put in a proposal to make sure that those are done. And I think those are key elements when you're recruiting, trying to bring in new students, that the safety of a university is something that we can talk about. So again, it becomes an economic driver for Grant County as well. Programs that have started here in Grant County, we've been very blessed with. We've had the first war program, for example, that has now gone statewide, received much accreditation for the work that has been done. We also see other programs throughout the state that have benefited. One one that you're familiar with, and I believe that you've provided assistance for, is our Imagination Library. These are, this is a program that provides books every month to children in the mail. And this was started right here in our own area by two individuals, Bob and Lauren Nelson, who really worked extremely hard to get this program going with the help of the commission, with the help of our city councils. We've been able to see this, now we're going statewide. We even put in $100,000 in for that, and we're fortunate to see children all across the state benefiting, not just with the book one time, but to have those and encouraging parents to reach to those children. We saw that with the budget that we had. We saw that with the budget that we had passed, we had a slight spending increase. It still wasn't where I wanted it to be. When I look at the 2008 levels, that's always the gauge that I try to see how we are financially. And the reason I look at that is because that's pre-recession. And I look and see how many dollars were going into the school systems? How many dollars were going into other areas like our senior citizen services? How many dollars were going into programs that were going to be cut? And we still haven't gotten there. So when we're talking about added revenue or new revenue, I always want to make sure that we can get those services for our veterans, for example, to make sure that they're at the level that we were at 2008. We spent a lot of dollars, and I should say invest a lot of dollars, into our court systems. And I can tell you through this recession, it's been our courts, it's been our judges, it's been our district attorneys who have taken the brunt of this. And once again, we put in dollars into those areas to help alleviate some of the concerns and the understaffing and the backlog of cases. And once again, it got vetoed out. And so I am very concerned when these dollars are not getting into these highly-needed areas. We've got to continue to have the discussion to put these dollars in there. As specific to Grant County, I know that we had many capital outlay requests and thank you. Thank you for going through the prospector process. Thank you for having all your work in and the information that's there to help me defend these projects. There were several priorities within Grant County. And I know that one of the projects that I did fund was on the road, on the road maintenance building, basically because there was a dire need for the roof, and so that was put in there. I also know and thank you Commissioner Hall and Sharn for visiting with me in Santa Fe in regards to the Substance Abuse Prevention Center. That's an extremely vital program and something that we absolutely need. And we'll continue to work and then once we can get the RFP that comes back and shows the business aspect of it. And most importantly for me, once we can get a site secured, then you have my commitment to fund that, to assist the county and what it does is it assists us throughout the whole, you know, all the way from Invis to Buckhorn and everywhere in between for a much-needed area. So you do have my commitment to provide that funding there if we go into a special session, which we might because you're aware that we have the capital outlay bill, which ultimately died on the Senate floor. And I want to give a little bit of discussion on that because you hear a lot of the discussion that took place within the media saying that it was this fault or that fault. And all I have to say that, you know, we got the bill over with sixteen minutes to go, where eighty million dollars is removed from our projects. And let me remind you, this capital outlay bill was a bipartisan bill that passed through the Senate forty to one. So there was agreement that it was a fair bill and putting dollars into our local communities and to much-needed projects. And unfortunately, because there were so many delays that were missed on the House side of it, three days to be example, to be exact, March sixth, March eleventh, to March sixteenth, were days that were extended to try to get these projects in so we can have the bill move forward. It didn't happen until the last sixteen minutes of the session. And I have to say that you sent me up to Santa Fe to advocate for you and all of our projects and all of our communities. And when you're going to take nearly a million dollars out of our communities to fund roads in Southeast New Mexico, I'm not saying that roads aren't needed for improvements in Southeast New Mexico. But I am saying that when you have funds that have already been voted on and approved within the Senate, I felt that it was a fair process. If you're going to take away five hundred thousand from Western New Mexico University and two hundred and fifty thousand from Fort Barrett Medical Center for safety upgrades for our patients, I've got to make sure that I can defend that. And with sixteen minutes to go in a session, there's just not enough time for each legislator to make sure they advocate for their community. So it leaves us where we're at right now, whether we'll go in a special session or not. I know that when the session ends, protocol and ceremonial, you have three senators to go up to the House of Representatives to notify them that we have completed our business. Three that go to the governor's office to notify her that we have completed our business. I was one of three senators who was chosen to go up to the governor's office. And yes, there was some tension, there was some frustration, and the words that were shared with me was that we're not going into special session, that capital is dead. I understand once time pulls off and time elapses a little bit and the pressures that's come from the business communities and local communities that we need these dollars to flow into the communities. We need these for jobs, we need these for continued upgrades to our facilities. So I believe we will go in a special session. I believe that it should be a one-day session. I don't think there should be anything else on the agenda but capital outlay. Because once you start adding more issues like tax cut packages or you start adding more divisive issues that you may have heard of throughout the session, all it does is extend the amount of debate and extend the time that we're up there for session, which is at the cost of fifty thousand dollars a day to the taxpayers. We can find other ways to use those monies and to benefit the citizens of New Mexico. So with that, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I'm happy to answer any questions and stand here if any other elected officials, if it's your wish, to answer questions because each of you have affiliates as well and each of you have priority bills that you guys wanted to get through and I'd love to be able to answer those.
Would it help if we sent a letter or something to the governor's office asking for a special session?
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, actually, the mayors, I'm not sure this is the municipal league, but I believe fifty-seven mayors have signed on to a letter encouraging the governor to put on a special session. I don't know what the association of counties have done, but I would encourage that to be done as well because you see how important that those needs are within your community. If they're not funded this year and the roof, for example, Grant County Maintenance Center stays as needed, it makes it difficult to do other funds, for example, doing that and on top of that, doing the substance abuse area as well. So if we can get projects going, get them, put in the dollars into the community, that'd be the way to go. So please, if you can support that.
I can have a key.
At the association, we haven't had a meeting since, since the session ended. But we have a regional meeting next Thursday. So which, by the way, you're invited to, I think.
Mr. Chairman, that's in TRC?
Yes.
Do you know what date that is?
I can find out.
We can check there. Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, I'm actually going to push the Association of Counties because I think they can come a little further south into the regional meetings. So I'm going to kind of just advocate that we can come down a little bit more in I-25.
Like, that's my district and they try to go to each county each year. So we went to Dimming three years ago, Cruz's last year, TRC, so we should be next year.
We'll hold them to that, Mr. Chairman.
So any other commissioner comments?
I just want to thank you, Senator, for your open-door policy that you have for, for when I was up there. And then also, I certainly want to thank you for your input and advice outside of the session that we, you have met with us numerous times on our project and given us guidance, and I appreciate that.
Same here. It always feels good to know that we're going up there and being able to talk to you at any time and call you off the floor and you're always willing to do that and we really do appreciate you. Thank you for everything you do.
Two officials?
Yeah, I have that on the thirtieth at ten o'clock, but I'll get you more information. I'll text it to you.
Thank you.
So that's, and I think that's all the questions we have.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, and if I may, I wanted to read a proclamation. Thank you for giving this to me. This isn't dealing with colonias and it was sent to the counties, but I'll go ahead and read this. The legislative, the legislature of the state of New Mexico, Fifty-second Legislature, First Session, 2015, Senate Journal, one of five. A journal memorial proclaiming February nineteenth, 2015, to be Colonial Day at the legislature and requesting the governor and her cabinet to assist local efforts to improve the quality of life in New Mexico by adding rural communities and colonias to the state's priority action list of programs. Whereas residents of rural and colonialist communities statewide face harsh challenges on a daily basis, but they are proud, they are proud people who are reluctant to ask for help. And whereas individual counties continue to undertake independent and ambitious infrastructure improvement plans designed to enhance social and economic development opportunities for all residents of New Mexico. And whereas by initiating a statewide improvement program for rural and colonialist communities, the state could partner with thirty-three counties to empower these small communities and dramatically improve the quality of life in them while simultaneously creating new entrepreneurial zones that will complement existing projects in the incorporated municipalities. Now, be it resolved by the legislature of the state of New Mexico that February nineteenth, 2015, be recognized as Colonial Day at the legislature and be it further resolved that the Governor Martinez and her cabinet be requested to work with the Board of Directors of the New Mexico Association of Counties to assist local efforts to improve quality of life in the state and to add improvements for rural communities and colonias to the state priority and action list of programs for legislative funding. Be it further resolved that copies of this memorial be transmitted to the governor and the Board of Directors and the New Mexico Association of Counties. Sign is sealed at the Capitol in the city of Santa Fe. John A. Sanchez, President, New Mexico State Senate. Don Tripp, Speaker of the House, New Mexico Representatives. Denise Ramones, Chief Clerk, House Representative. President Pro Tem Mary K. Payton. And Lenora Manon Ronhome, Chief Clerk, New Mexico State Senate. And Mr. Chairman, and I take great pride in this proclamation because this was actually a bill that I carried and probably one of the most impactful bills that we've seen throughout, throughout Southern New Mexico. When you see how much representation we have, the population is a lot less in Southern New Mexico than obviously in the northern part, therefore, they have more representation, meaning that more capital outlay dollars go each to, each of those members to their communities. What this helped, helps us do is really equalize some of that. For each year, I believe this year, there's going to be about eighteen million that'll come directly to the southern communities. And what a colonia is, a colonia is any community a hundred and fifty miles from the border of Mexico. So us in Grant County, in all of our areas, are colonious communities. All the way ranging from Catron County to Eddie County and anywhere in between, these are colonias. And when you're looking at economic development and you want to try to attract jobs and you want to try to attract people over here, this is absolutely essential that we have the infrastructure in place for running water, many things that we take for granted that some communities in our own areas don't have. These funds help to do so. So what we're asking here at the legislature is that the governor make this part of, of the overall statewide plan to continue to advocate. And what I would ask, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, is for your assistance as well when you're speaking with your, your Association of Counties, as well as I believe that we have a couple of representatives from the town of Silver with the municipal league, then we remember the colonias and the tribal infrastructure funds. And this is a battle every year simply because these are dollars that otherwise may go to other parts of the state. But we want to make sure that we protect this. And there's been every year efforts to try to take away these, these programs. And what it does, it affects New Mexicans. So if we can have the Association of Counties continue to stand in support, as well as the municipal league, to stand in support of projects like this, it really does make the quality of life better for all residents of New Mexico, specifically in the most regions that are overlooked in your colonias, southern communities, and your tribal areas throughout the state. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I present this proclamation to you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. And I just want to close by thanking each of you, as well as all the audience members that are watching via cast and those behind me as well, for allowing me to serve as your state senator. It's all about public service and it's all about being here to making sure that I'm listening to the needs of our community. I was born and raised here. This is my community that I'm proud of and I'll continue to advocate. With your help, you help guide the direction of what the discussion needs to be. And as always, anytime that you go up to a legislative session in Santa Fe, I value your time and please make time to visit with me. I'll make time to make sure I step out of committees to have that opportunity for you to have a good experience in Santa Fe because when it comes down to it, that roundhouse is your house as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming by. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Silver City Grant County Tourism Visitor Center and Marketing Quarterly Report. Silver City Arts and Cultural District Director, George Dorlin.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Permission to approach the bench?
Have more news for us?
Yes.
Last time you brought, what'd you call it?
Gifts.
Gifts, yeah, they're not gifts. Looks like homework.
Thanks, sir.
Good reading.
Good morning, I'm George Julian Warren, Silver City Arch and Cultural District Director. As you all know, Arts and Cultural District is contracted by the town of Silver City and, and the county for advertising and fulfillment services. We work closely with the tourism board of, of the county. In cooperation with them, we've managed to accomplish a tremendous amount in the third quarter and I'm very pleased to be here today to share some of that with you. First thing I would like to do is thank the commissioners for their support of the Continental Divide Trail Days. We had our first annual celebration this year. It was phenomenal. It brought in people from outside of the state. It's raising awareness of our area nationally and I'm very proud to be a part of that. And so thank you for your support of that. There's been a lot of press that you've seen about it. And, and when you see these people coming through over the next couple of weeks, we have expected two hundred through hikers. They, they look dirty and they smell bad. They are not bums. They are walking thirty-one hundred miles from the border of Mexico to Canada. Their phenomenal greed, welcome them. They love Silver City and, and it's a great, great partnership we have with the Continental Divide Trail Coalition. Really, the thing that I'm most proud to present here today, very excited about our third quarter numbers. In the visitor center, in the third quarter, we saw the highest numbers of visitors in the last three years. We saw a thirty-six percent increase over last year's numbers. Specifically, in February and March, we saw tremendous numbers of a thirty-seven percent increase and a fifty-five percent increase in the numbers of people coming into the visitor center. When these numbers were handed to me by our stats collector, I, I was in doubt. But as you know, we also do a report card that collects data from the major attractions, the Cliff Dwellings, the Silver City Museum, Western New Mexico University Museum, as well as the City of Rocks. And they correlated to our own. We saw a twenty percent increase at the visitor center, at the Cliff Dwellings, forty percent at the site itself. We saw a thirty-two percent increase at Western New Mexico University Museum and a thirty-three percent increase at the City of Rocks State Park. So these numbers are validated as we are seeing an increase of traffic, where we saw an increase of traffic in the third quarter. And we're very excited about that. We also saw this, added to our, new to our statistics, you will hear me report also from lodgers in the coming quarters. We have brought on three lodgers and we will add to that so that we can, in this report, get a sneak peek of what is happening in the tourism sector prior to the late reports that we get later on through gross receipts and/or lodger's tax reports that come much later. This will give us at least a snapshot of what is happening now so that we can adapt and respond very quickly to this, this changing marketplace. Those three lodgers in, in the third quarter saw very strong February's and March also that correlated to these other numbers. However, they're seeing that their numbers are relatively flat. And I would say, you know, if we were to project it forward, we might see a two percent, three percent increase in lodger's tax, but I'm not one to predict the future. We responded to three thousand, two hundred and sixty-two requests for information. That in part, again, I would like to acknowledge our partnership with Grant County Tourism. That is in large part to their efforts as well and the advertising that they're placing. We, we also, in partnership with one of our festivals, went out to the, to the Tucson Book Festival in partnership with the Southwest Festival of Written Word, our own local book festival, and we engaged thousands of people. It was a phenomenal experience. We, we gathered seven hundred emails and gave out thousands of pieces of promotionals. One of the writers that we hosted, we, we set her up for meditation in, in the afternoon at our new Lotus Center, Qi Gong, at noon the following day. And she went away tremendously relaxed and feeling psychologically balanced again. And so Psychology Today, tout Silver City and surrounding areas, a wonderful place to bring your life together. And we also received some press on Albuquerque TV, which also has yielded some, some interest. So overall, we've had a wonderful quarter. We're also seeing an increase in tour buses. We partnered with Saddle Brook, a retirement community of ten thousand north of Tucson, Arizona, and brought in a bus of four to six people. They were here for three days. It was a wonderful experience. We're looking at other opportunities like that. You'll see a tour bus coming in this weekend. They're dropping them off for shopping tomorrow in downtown, or on Saturday, in downtown Silver City. You'll also see in the coming months, we have Interest Jaguar Club, a Model T Club. So the, the car enthusiasts also are seeing us as a wonderful destination. Upcoming next week, I just want to put in a good word for the Governor's Conference on Hospitality. This is an, an annual event put on by the New Mexico Hospitality Association, which is now a merger between the Lodgers Association and the Tourism Association in New Mexico, creating a much stronger body. I encourage anybody and everybody to, to join this organization that has a vested interest in tourism. It is the advocacy group for our state, and they work very closely with New Mexico Tourism. I also, again, just want to encourage all of us to support our new Secretary of Tourism, Rebecca Latham, who has now been confirmed at the last legislative session and will be taking the helm with an expanded tourism budget this year over last year. And I'm very encouraged by the partnership that we have with them on the New Mexico True campaign. I will take any questions. Thank you.
George, thanks for the gifts. We appreciate them. This is, this is good.
Beautiful work. Glad, it always makes me feel good whenever I see New Mexico's beautiful scenery put out there. I have mixed emotions about that because we like to keep it to ourselves, but I know it's necessary, so it's kind of a mixed bag there. But we got a beautiful area, and I'm always proud to be from the Grant County area because of its beauty. And so thank you for representing us.
I particularly like your earmarks so we know where to go look.
Well, I wanted to know if you were that guy dancing here on the scene in the very back page? Is that you dancing there?
No, I do kind of look like that when I dance.
Talking about the one with the long hair. No, I'm not, yeah.
You've done a great job, and it's very impressive to see, you know, all the hard work and what happens, so great job. Thank you.
Thanks, George. Thank you very much. You betcha. Next on the agenda, let's see here, is recognition of town of Silver City and Alex Brown for donating lights to the Baton Park.
Commissioner, I put this on the agenda. You know, so, so many times we have little things that go on between the, the city and the county, and there's a, and they're little things, but they're big deals for us. And getting lights to put at Baton Park for us is, is a really big deal, so I'd really like to thank you, Alex, and, or Mr. Brown, I'm sorry. And I, I saw Councilor Ganna was here and Councilor Smith was here. I wish they would've stayed, but thank you all very much for working with us and getting us those lights, because like I said, they're little gestures, but it's a big deal for us, and we really do appreciate it.
You bring up a good point. I, I know just yesterday, I was in Mr. Brown's office, and, you know, we coordinate a lot of our efforts and such, and it's important to our constituents and to the citizens of the county and the city is that we work together. And I walked out of that meeting feeling really well. So thank you for your support.
Well, I really appreciate it and thank you. I, I think we work really good together, all of the elected officials in Grant County and, and the town of Silver City. It's just because of the communication that we have that, because I knew you needed lights because Anthony had asked me for the quote from Art Bell when we built our lights. So the first thing I thought about when, when we, when I knew that we, we were just going to store them is to, to look and see if you guys could use them. And, and we've done this through, through many years of, of communication and cooperation. And as long as we keep doing that, I think it is going to benefit all the, the public in Grant County. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Alex. Appreciate everything you do for us.
Like I said, I think a lot of times all this stuff goes unnoticed, and we definitely want to, want to say thank you very much for all your help and for everything that you do for this area.
We always have, don't ask for coffee. I didn't get anything like that yesterday. That's okay.
I didn't even know the meeting was at my office, so I'm sorry.
He told me if he made on Friday, that he would have that, but.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Hila National Forest Plan update from Matt Schultz. Do you, you need a minute to get set up? Okay, we'll take a couple-minute recess at this time then. Call back to order the Grant County Commission. Next item on the agenda is the Hila National Forest Plan update from Matt Schultz. Welcome, Matt. How are you today?
I'm back. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, elected officials, staff, I am the forest planner for the Hila National Forest, and I'm here to talk about the forest plan revision. And chances are, your constituents or yourselves care about one or more of the things on this list: clean water, fresh air, food through hunting or fishing or grazing, economic opportunities, wood products, religious and cultural values, and recreation. And these are all cultural and physical amenities that are provided by the Hila National Forest. And if you care about these amenities, chances are you're going to care about the forest plan because the forest plan is the comprehensive document that provides management guidance for the management of all resources on the national forest for the next fifteen years or more. So it's a big deal, and we only get so many chances in our careers or lifetimes to be part of a planning effort of this scope and scale. And that's how I like to think about forest plan revision, is that it's an opportunity for your knowledge and suggestions to be heard and incorporated in planning the future of the Hila. It's an opportunity to build on your relationships with other users and constituents and the Hila staff in developing a shared vision for the Hila that hopefully culminates in the revised forest plan. So why now? Well, the National Forest Management Act requires that the forest plan be revised periodically, usually every fifteen years. You'll notice that the forest plan was approved in nineteen eighty-six, so we're a little past the fifteen-year mark. The plan has been amended at various times to account for changes in land management and emerging issues, but there still has been significant changes both within the forest and surrounding communities that warrant plan revision at this time. So what's changed? Well, I think we all can recognize that resource conditions have changed. We've been experiencing drought. We've had extremely large wildfires in the last few years. These have cascading effects for the resources on the forest. Uses and demands have changed, and I use demands fairly broadly. So we have different demands legally, for example, the travel management plan, socially, and even economically for our wood products. Social and cultural influences have changed. The nineteen eighty-six plan probably never mentioned the wildland-urban interface, but I assure you that it will be a focus of management attention in the revised plan. Our science and technology have changed too. We know and understand a lot more about fire ecology than we did in nineteen eighty-six. We also have some new tools. We have GIS, we have remote sensing, so we're able to monitor conditions on the forest much more effectively. And even some of our milling and timber operation technology has also advanced and become more efficient. But we also have threats to the sustainability of certain resources through things such as invasive species, uncharacteristic wildfire, and climate change. So that's a lot of change to account for, but it's necessary to account for all that change, anticipate those changes, and then try to manage those changes as best we can as we look forward. And the forest plan is a very forward-looking document. The main driver of the plan is what's called desired future conditions. And these paint a picture of the desired outcome from land management. We also have objectives, which are measurable statements of progress towards achieving those desired future conditions, followed by standards, guidelines, and suitability, which clarify how and where certain projects and activities may or may not take place. And it's important to note that forest plans are consistent with and do not override existing policy, law, or regulation. And these constraints have increased over the decades as shown by the visual aid. And sometimes we don't have a lot of room for negotiation or decision space along some of those lines, but on other areas of the plans we do, and we can work forward on those fronts. So it's important to confirm what is working with the nineteen eighty-six plan since it's not all obsolete, and identify where there is a need for change. Site-specific or project-level decisions are not made in the plan but are shaped by it. And once approved, all subsequent proposals, projects, and activities must be consistent with the plan or the plan must be amended. We will be following the two thousand twelve Planning Rule, which provides national guidance on the forest plan revision process, with increased emphasis on collaboration and public engagement, sustainability and ecosystem services, and cross-jurisdictional coordination, with continued emphasis on multiple-use management and the use of the best available science. Our public participation goals throughout the process are transparencies, enhanced opportunities for the public to participate, and the identification of desired social, economic, and ecological conditions together. We will coordinate our forest planning efforts with the plans and policies of tribes, other federal agencies, and state and local governments, and seek opportunities to form joint objectives and reduce or resolve conflict. So for example, we would like all the relevant plans for Grant County so that we can work with those and evaluate them and see what elements would be appropriate to incorporate into our forest plan for consistency. So those were the overall goals for the process. Now we can get into the structure. The forest plan revision process is divided into three phases. We have the assessment phase, which will last approximately a year. Then we move into the plan revision and NEPA analysis phase. NEPA is the National Environmental Policy Act, which kind of provides a decision-making framework for any federal action that may affect the environment. And then we, once the plan is approved, we go into implementation and monitoring, which will last fifteen years or more. I should mention that the plan revision phase will take multiple years, probably around three, if all goes well. It's important to note that we have not started this process. We are at the very beginning. No decisions have been made. And we are basically doing a lot of public outreach ahead of entering into plan revision so we know how to communicate and engage with our stakeholders, and we kind of keep everybody informed throughout the process. So we will be starting the assessment probably next month, and there will be a public notice for that action. And then we will have some follow-up meetings to our March community conversations, kind of talking about the assessment process in more detail. So in the assessment phase, we'll assess fifteen important ecological, social, and economic resource topics to determine what is out there, what is the trend, what is the future potential, and what is the risk to those resources, using the best available science, local information, national perspectives, and tribal or native knowledge, to identify where in the nineteen eighty-six plan needs to be revised and updated. So the first five topics of the fifteen are ecological, where we'll assess the terrestrial, riparian, and aquatic ecosystems, air, soil, and water resources, important natural processes, carbon stocks, and at-risk species. The next ten out of the fifteen are social-economic, where we'll assess the social, cultural, and economic conditions, benefits people obtain from ecosystem services, multiple uses, and their economic contributions, recreation, and energy and minerals. And finally, we will assess infrastructure, areas of tribal importance, cultural and historic resources, land ownership and use, and existing and potential designated areas. So then we enter into, I should mention that this will take a lot of work. That's going to be a very intensive year, but it'll be invaluable because it'll build the foundation for informed decision-making during forest plan revision. And we need your help because you have experience, you have knowledge, you might even have data that we can incorporate into the assessment. And really, to be truly successful in this in Denver, we really do need to incorporate as much information that we have in the local community as possible. So with your help, we'll develop a future vision for the forest based on those desired future conditions and the need for change, evaluate areas that may be suitable for special designation, develop a draft plan and alternatives using the NEPA process. There will be an opportunity to review this draft plan and, and analysis, followed by a response to comments and revision of the draft forest plan. We will consult with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. This will be followed by an injection period, and then we will finally arrive at the revised or final forest plan and the record of decision. So during the special designation process, we will identify areas that may be suitable for special designation, such as research natural areas, wild and scenic rivers, and wilderness. I do stress the term "may" because as we go through the inventory and valuation process, some areas may not be suitable. And it's important to note that at most, the forest decision-maker, which is the forest supervisor, can only recommend to Congress these designations for wilderness and wild and scenic rivers. Then it's up to Congress to enact legislation for these designations or not. Once the plans approve, all projects and activities go forth that are consistent with the forest plan, and then we use monitoring as the basis to determine if we're making progress towards reaching those desired future conditions or whether other amendments or changes in management are needed. We want Grant County to be an active participant in developing this future vision for the Hila National Forest. We want- that we can incorporate into the assessment. And really, to be truly successful in this in Denver, we really do need to incorporate as much information that we have in the local community as possible. So with your help, we'll develop a future vision for the forest based on those desired future conditions and the need for change, evaluate areas that may be suitable for special designation, develop a draft plan and alternatives using the NEPA process. There will be an opportunity to review this draft plan and analysis, followed by a response to comments and revision of the draft forest plan. We will consult with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. This will be followed by an injection period, and then we will finally arrive at the revised or final forest plan and the record of decision. So during the special designation process, we will identify areas that may be suitable for special designation, such as research natural areas, wild and scenic rivers, and wilderness. I do stress the term "may" because as we go through the inventory and valuation process, some areas may not be suitable. And it's important to note that at most, the forest decision-maker, which is the forest supervisor, can only recommend to Congress these designations for wilderness and wild and scenic rivers. Then it's up to Congress to enact legislation for these designations or not. Once the plans approve, all projects and activities go forth that are consistent with the forest plan, and then we use monitoring as the basis to determine if we're making progress towards reaching those desired future conditions, or whether other amendments or changes in management are needed. We want Grant County to be an active participant in developing this future vision for the Hila National Forest. We want you to tell us what you value about the forest, share your knowledge and data, offer your suggestions with forest management with us, build on existing partnerships, and explore ways to find new solutions to land management goals. So we do have a website dedicated to forest plan revision. It's got a very clunky URL, but if you go to our Hila National Forest page, there's links in the upper right-hand corner, and these will also have links to the 2012 Planning Rule that we're using, as well as the final directives. We will be posting updates to the website on a regular basis, and we do have an email address dedicated to forest plan revision, which is hila-plan@fs.fed.us. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions you might have.
Do we need to request to be a coordinating agency, or are we automatically a coordinating agency?
Once we enter the NEPA process, you would need to request to be a cooperating agency. And we can...there will also be a notice published when we're starting the actual specific NEPA process.
Commission meeting proclaiming that we want to be a coordinating agency, so we assume whatever legal document that's supposed to be, resignation, proclamation, a letter, whatever. Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Looks like you're off the hook. You can close, or I can say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove a proclamation declaring April 19, 2015, to April 25, 2015, which we are in the midst of right now, as Marine Corps League Week. Denisha.
Thank you. The county of Grant proclamation. Whereas the National Marine Corps League is a nonprofit organization of 76,000 marine veterans, and whereas the National Marine Corps League was born in 1923 under the leadership of Lieutenant General John H. Lejeune, 13th Commandant of the United States Marine Corps, and whereas the National Marine Corps League was federally chartered in 1937 and consists of 10 divisions, and whereas the New Mexico Marine Corps League entered the National League in 1979 as part of the Rocky Mountain Division, and whereas Gaffney-Oglesby Detachment 1328 was activated on April 28, 2009, in Silver City, New Mexico, and whereas Gaffney-Oglesby Detachment 1328 is the most recently activated of the nine currently active detachments in New Mexico, and whereas Gaffney-Oglesby is actively serving our local veterans and the Silver City community, and whereas Gaffney-Oglesby will be hosting our annual Marine Corps League State Convention on April 24 and 25, and whereas Gaffney-Oglesby requests that the county of Grant proclaim the week of April 19 through April 25, 2015, as Marine Corps League Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the governing body of the county of Grant does hereby proclaim the week of April 19 through April 25, 2015, as Marine Corps League Week.
I know we are represented by some Marine Corps people today. You want to come on up and say a few words? You're more than welcome to.
Ladies and gentlemen and commissioners, these are...
There's a white button.
Which button?
The white one.
The white?
Yes, sir.
Is it red now?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Frank Donahue, Marine Corps League member of Gaffney-Oglesby, and this is Junior Vice George Morrison, and this is a two-war event, and he's a Marine Corps League associate member, but we're just here and we're just asking for this, that you recognize this. This is a first for Silver City, anyway, so we just ask you for your support and come out to this barbecue tomorrow evening, just bring money.
(laughing).
You know.
Have an appetite, right?
And a very good appetite.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the proclamation?
We welcome our community to join us at any time on any of these functions, because we enjoy being in the community and doing things for our community and for veterans.
Thanks, Frank.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the proclamation declaring April 19, 2015, to April 25, 2015, as Marine Corps League Week.
Second. There's a motion, the second, to proclaim declaring April 19 through the 25 as Marine Corps League Week. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We're going to bring this down to you.
Very good. Oh, my gosh. Good old shooter. What's happening here? Did I...did I miss you, man?
I thought you meant to just laugh. (laughing).
You might do this.
Come over here, George.
Wake up the mayor. Next item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove a proclamation declaring May 5, 2015, as Give Grandly, Give Local Day. Denisha.
Thank you. Give Grandly, Give Local proclamation. Whereas Grant County is led by numerous nonprofit organizations, which provide invaluable services such as sheltering our homeless, feeding our hungry, and caring for our youth, and whereas Give Grandly, Give Local Day, May 5, 2015, is the second community-wide giving event participation in the National Day of Giving, hosted locally by the Southwest New Mexico Nonprofit Coalition and the Grant County Community Foundation, online at www.grantcountycommunityfoundation.org. And whereas Give Grandly, Give Local Day shall grow the spirit of giving and raise as much money as possible for the nonprofits in Grant County. And whereas, through the Grant County Community Foundation and the Southwest New Mexico Nonprofit Coalition partners, Give Grandly, Give Local Day shall inspire the public to support our nonprofit organization on this one day, May 5, online at www.givgrandly.org. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Commissioner of the county of Grant that May 5, 2015, is the second ever Give Grandly, Give Local Day, and be it further proclaimed that for all citizens, it is the official day of providing financial support for all of the cause that continue to move our city forward.
Thank you, Denisha. Is anybody here representing? Okay. Come on up.
Do I press the button?
It's right on top. It's white. If it's not red, it will turn red.
Right there. Got it. All right. Thank you. On behalf of the Grant County Community Foundation Advisory Board and the 43 nonprofits participating in Give Grandly, Give Local, which is the 2015 Day of Giving, I thank you for supporting this in Denver for the second year in a row. Last year, we made history. We raised the most money ever raised in Grant County in 24 hours. This year, we intend to make history again. Please join us in Gulf Park on May 5 from 11:00 to 6:00 for information, music, and community, and remember, give a little, give a lot, give local, and give grandly on May 5. Thank you.
Stay right there, and we'll complete this motion here. Can I get a motion to approve May 5 as Give Grandly, Give Local Day?
Motion to approve proclamation declaring May 5, 2015, as Give Grandly, Give Local Day.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. You get your picture taken.
I just kind of realized, perhaps I should have said that after you did the acceptance.
All right. Thanks so much.
The girl in the closet, you're acting funny. Okay, next item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove a fire protection fund for 2016 fiscal year, volunteer fire departments of Cliff, Hila, Grant, Fort Baird, lower members Pinos Altos, Santa Rita Hanover Fierros, Sapio Creek, Cairo and Upper Members, and Whiskey Creek. We went over this on Tuesdays, February 70.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the fire protection fund for 2016 fiscal year for volunteer fire departments.
Second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Appoint members to the Shooting Range Advisory Board, interested candidates, sir, as follows: Kirk Carlson, Gregory Collins, Charlie Castillo, Sue Castillo-Lambert, Jim Leach, Robert Love II, Philip McKee, Scott Nielsen, and Sean Reese. We did an evaluation process off their resumes. Do we have the...is this it? Okay. So you want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Kirk Carlson, Gregory Collins, Milo Lambert, Robert Love II, Philip McKee, Scott Nielsen, and Sean Reese.
Second. There's a motion, a second. To appoint Kirk Carlson, Gregory Collins, Milo Lambert, Robert Love II, Philip McKee, Scott Nielsen, and Sean Reese. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is L, approve or disapprove a transfer of title for a 2007 utility trailer from Wayne Erickson to the Pinos Altos Volunteer Fire and Rescue.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the transfer of the title of a 2007 utility trailer from Erickson and Wayne to the Pinos Altos Volunteer Fire Department of Rescue.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve the transfer of title of a 2007 utility trailer from Wayne Erickson to the PA Volunteer Fire and Rescue. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove transfer of Unit 2809, an ambulance from Sapio Creek Fire Department, to the Hila Regional EMS Service.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the transfer of the Unit 2809 ambulance from Sapio Fire Department back to the Hila Regional EMS Service.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve this transfer. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove an inventory deletion from the lower members' fire department.
Motion to approve the inventory deletion from the lower members' volunteer fire department.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve agreement amendment number one between North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Non-Metro Area Agency on Aging in Grant County.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the agreement amendment number one between the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Non-Metro Area Agency on Aging in Grant County.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve agreement amendment number one between the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Non-Metro Area Agency on Aging in Grant County. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Bids. Approve or disapprove bid 14-6, brush truck body for the Whiskey Creek Volunteer Fire Department.
Motion to approve bid number 14-6, brush truck body for the Whiskey Creek Volunteer Fire Department.
My second. There's a motion, a second, to approve bid 14-06. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolutions. Approve or disapprove Resolution R-1511, Resolution to the Board of County Commissioners of Grant County, New Mexico, adopting and approving continuing disclosure compliance procedures for bonds, loans, for the county, other matters relating thereto, and ratifying actions previously taken in connection therewith.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Resolution R-1511.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve R-1511. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Resolution R-1511, adopting and approving continuing disclosure compliance procedures for bonds, loans, for the county, other matters relating thereto, and ratifying actions previously taken in connection therewith.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Resolution R-1511.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve R-1511. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Resolution R-1511. There's a motion, a second, to approve R-1511. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion to approve R-1511. There's a motion, a second, to approve R-1511. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion to approve R-1511. There's a motion, a second, to approve R-1511. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion to approve R-1511. There's a motion, a second, to approve R-1511. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion to adjourn the Grant County Injured and Health Plan Claims Board, approve or disapprove the Health Plan Claims Injured Fund for March 31st. It is $40,213.54 on 55 claims to Hila Regional Medical Center.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Health Plan Claims Injured Fund for March 31st, 2015.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve the Health Plan Claims Fund for March 31st, 2015. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion to adjourn the Grant County Injured and Health Plan Claims. My second. All those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Call back to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners. I hate to do this, but I have a funeral to attend in about five minutes, and I'm going to turn the gavel over to Commissioner Ramos, and I'm not having comments today, and I know you guys have a closed session. I'll try to come back if I can. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over here. Oh, that's fine.
Denisha, if you can just get my stuff to the office, please. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Commissioner comments.
Deputy President. Reporting on some of the areas that we've covered this past, since our last meeting, is, first of all, before I forget, I want to remind the public that the charts that were discussed as far as our five-person commission and comments, those will be placed in the reception area of our county office, and if you want to come by and look at those, please do do so, and always feel comfortable in talking to your commissioners about it, because I've fielded quite a few questions already on it and such, and it's really important for we get insight on that. I've also continued to work, put a lot of hours in it, and so has a lot of other people, in our substance abuse treatment center, Tucasa. So we continue to work on that. We are really excited about, we are now in negotiation for a site. Our RFP is being worked on and such, and so we really come to the point where we're getting a face and a personality on this program, and so it's a very exciting time for us, after a couple of years of hard work. I attended the Hila, which I always enjoy, the Hila EDA Roundtable, where we come together and we listen and what's happening within the business world, and what's happening in the community and organizations, and each time they have a meeting, we listen to a presentation by a particular business, talk about what's going on in the community as far as their particular business is concerned. Dispatch meeting, some internal meetings. I also went to, that was really interesting, I went to the Disability Center Open House over here by the REC building, and it's really interesting how they've come together on shoestring. It's just amazing what they've done. They pull together a lot of equipment that people can check out and take home or use there at the center, so that was very interesting to attend also. I also participated, and have one more to do, in Cliff is a Day in the Life of a DWI Offender with Cindy McLean and her DWI program. I had to sentence a whole bunch of people to please do so, and I feel comfortable in talking to your commissioners about it, because I've fielded quite a few questions already on it and such, and it's really important for...we get insight on that. I've also continued to work...put a lot of hours in it, and so has a lot of other people in our substance abuse treatment center, Tucasa. So we continue to work on that. We are really excited about...we are now in negotiation for a site. Our RFP is being worked on and such, and so we really come to the point where we're getting a face and a personality on this program, and so it's a very exciting time for us, after a couple of years of hard work. I attended the Hila...which I always enjoy, the Hila EDA Roundtable, where we come together and we listen on what's happening within the business world, and what's happening in the community and organizations. And each time they have a meeting, we listen to a presentation by a particular business talk about what's going on in the community as far as their particular business is concerned. Dispatch meeting, some internal meetings. I also went to...that was really interesting. I went to the Disability Center Open House over here by the REC building, and it's really interesting how they've come together on shoestring. It's just amazing what they've done. They pull together a lot of equipment that people can check out and take home or use there at the center, so that was very interesting to attend also. I also participated, and have one more to do in Cliff, is a day in the life of a DWI offender with Cindy McLean and her DWI program. I had to sentence a whole bunch of people to DWI, so college students, and it was quite interesting. I think it enlightened a lot of them for them to understand it's not a joke, and when you dig it there and how it affects you for the rest of your life. So we did that. And with that, I think that's it.
I don't have very much today. I just wanted to let people know that I did attend the water board meeting. The board is really working diligently to try and get Hurley, the town of Hurley, a water system. I know $2.1 million have been approved by the...I'm sorry, by the board over the state of New Mexico, I'm sorry, ISE, and they're utilizing $2.1 million, but there's going to take at least $5 million to drill the actual well and get the infrastructure started to head towards the town of Hurley and connect it and what have you. There just won't be a backup with that amount of money. So we're working diligently to try and figure out how we can do that. The board is asking the county to start...or asking the county and the entities involved to start concentrating on Colonia's monies and other monies that we can to help them out, and they're even asking if we can put some of our other projects on hold that we're looking at for Colonia's funds. I'm just trying to get this done as soon as possible as the Hurley deadline comes sooner than what we think. So that's pretty much the only meeting I had between the last meeting and now, but that's all I've got. Next item on the agenda is executive session in accordance with NMSA...I'm sorry? Okay. There's nothing...we don't need to do it?
Motion to adjourn. Second. We are adjourned.